The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for coming this evening. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Spurling here.
Yep.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Here.
And we're all here. Moving on, we have public participation. We have a public comment period. This is the portion of the meeting where any member of the public can speak about any topic. Is there anybody that wishes to speak? Don't want to give you too much time to come up with something, so we'll go ahead and move on. To the swearing in of Officer Cody Klingberg. With that, I will turn it over to the Chief of Police.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to introduce our newest officer, Cody Klingberg, standing to my right here. Cody attended Plano High School and went on to work and go to college at Wobomsey Community College. In December of 2015, on the 21st, we hired him here, and he attended the Calea Suburban Law Enforcement Academy in January, graduated in March, on March 25th, 2016. Cody is currently in the FTO program. Also, he passed his Illinois Constitutional Test, which we got the results about 10 days after graduation, so that's huge. In the audience is his current, or his in-laws, soon-to-be-in-laws, his fiancee Kelly to his right. They're getting married on June 25th, 16, so it's not... Forty-six days. In the audience is Mike and Jean Clayton. Mayor?
We are ready, sir.
Gonna raise your right hand. Feet after me. Aye, take the news.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officers.
Duty of police officers.
And that's my last.
It probably will be.
Welcome aboard, Cody.
White Camry. Do you have my license plate number?
Be the first.
Surprise didn't happen on the way here tonight. There you go. Read the proclamation.
And you guys can stay for the whole meeting or just that part of it. We won't be offended. Thank you. Go ahead. All right, move on to item C this more, this evening, is recognition of Oswego High School student Luke Torres of Montgomery, for Montgomery in Motion, Street Art Design. That'll turn it over to Administrator Zofel.
Thank you. As you recall, in the past, we've talked about our theme, Montgomery in Motion, had a couple meanings for us, just talking about all the activity that's going on in the village, both from a business, you know, commercial, industrial standpoint, but also we want to get people, you know, the river's a big amenity for us, running right through the middle of town. You've got the trails, people can run, bike, kayak. And so we wanted something, you know, to bring people downtown and to get people aware of that. My daughter had actually just finished graphic design class, so I contacted her teacher, Mrs. Straits Woods, who's in the audience tonight, and asked if her class would be interested in doing it as a class assignment, or if she'd have some kids who just want to do it on their own. They did as a class assignment, so we got quite a few designs, a lot of great designs, and kind of went through them as staff. And then, this is the one we really liked here. So you can see, the red and yellow are kayaks, represent the kayaking. You can see some footprints going around in the middle there for the walking and running you can do. It's got kind of a compass feel. You put down for all the directions you can go in Montgomery. And then the blue and green, the colors just represent the earth and the outdoors, so very happy with that. We'll be very excited to see that out on the, on the street later this summer. So with that, I'd like to ask Luke to come down. And Mrs. Straits Woods, would you like to come down too? See if the mayor would like to come. More impressive to get this from the mayor than from me. Just gonna say.
Engineer Wallers? Engineer Wallers, do we have a date for when we're going to do the street art?
We haven't set a date when we're gonna start. We're still working on some of the logistics. For instance, we have to determine type of paint we're gonna use. You just can't use standard paint. You have to add a certain amount of material into the paint to get some wearing surface, so it doesn't get too slippery. So there's a few details like that that we haven't sorted out yet, and I think we're going to have to decide exactly where we want to place it. And I think we're gonna want to do a rendering of that and bring it back to the board for discussion before we embark on the final product. At one time, we had thought perhaps we would do it in the intersection, but I'm not sure anymore that that's the best place for it, so I'd like to at least have that discussion and possibly consider putting it on River Street as an option, and then decide what you might think is best.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. No problem. All right, move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the first of several proclamations. This one, I will read this, and then I'll invite Kelly Drew to come up to the podium. I'd like to say a few words. We added this to the agenda this evening at her request, so. So this is ALS Awareness Month. Whereas ALS, better known as Lou Gehrig's Disease, a fatal neurodegenerative disease characterized by degeneration of cell bodies of the lower motor neurons in the gray matter of the anterior horns of the spinal cord. And whereas the initial symptoms of ALS is weakness of skeletal muscles, especially those of the extremities. And whereas, as ALS progresses, the patient experiences difficulty in swallowing, talking, and breathing, and eventually causes muscles to atrophy, so the patient becomes a functional quadriplegic. And whereas ALS does not affect a patient's mental capacity, so the patient remains alert and aware of his or her loss of motor functions and the inevitable outcome of continued deterioration and death. And whereas, on average, patients diagnosed with ALS only survive two to five years from the time of diagnosis, and ALS has no known cause, means of prevention, or cure. And whereas, research indicates that military veterans are approximately twice as likely to develop ALS as those who have not served in the military. And whereas, the Department of Veteran Affairs implemented regulations to establish a presumption of service connection for ALS, thereby presuming that the development of ALS was incurred or aggravated, or incurred or aggravated by a veteran's service in the military. Whereas, a national ALS patient registry administered by the Centers of Disease Control is currently identifying cases of ALS in the United States and may become the single largest ALS research project ever created. And whereas, ALS Awareness Month increases the public's awareness of ALS patients, circumstances, and acknowledges the terrible impact this disease has not only, or has not only on the patient, but on his or her family in the community, and recognizes the research being done to eradicate this horrible disease. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Village of Montgomery, that I, Matt Broly, the Village President, hereby proclaim the month of May 2016 as ALS Awareness Month in Montgomery, and be it further resolved that the Village of Montgomery entreats the President and Congress of the United States to enact legislation to provide additional funding for research in order to find a treatment and eventual cure, dated the 9th of May 2016. With that, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
All right. You can do that first.
I want to thank Mayor Broly and the board for issuing this symbolic proclamation. As, in a little more layman's term, ALS is 100% fatal at this time. There is no effective treatment. There is no cure for ALS. Patients, on average, survive just two to five years. I lost my mom six months after diagnosis. While they remain fully aware, they lose all voluntary motor function, starting with limbs, and leading eventually to speaking, swallowing, and breathing. Awareness is the start, or I guess, the first thing that we can do to effect change ultimately with ALS awareness. It leads to action, incites action. Action incites fundraising, fundraising that promotes and supports research initiatives that are ongoing, as well as vital patient care and services provided by associations like the ALS Association. Hearing that this proclamation has been made by the Village of Montgomery is extremely meaningful to residents, as well as employees that work in your town, and anybody who comes through your town. It's meaningful support to those who have been touched and lost people to ALS, and those who are currently battling it. So for that, I thank Mayor Broly and the Village.
If I could, I'd like to dedicate this to my friend Sandy Pratt, who was a good, she was one of my sister's best friends. She was diagnosed with ALS and died about a year and a half ago, and to her dad, Alan Pratt, who also died from ALS when, when we were in high school.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, we'll move on. I have a few more proclamations. We have National Public Works Week. Whereas, public works serve, services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday life. And whereas, the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water treatment and distribution, sanitary sewers, storm sewers, streets and highways, signage, and lighting. And whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. Whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these, of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Matt Broly, Village President, do hereby proclaim May 15th through the 21st, 2016, as National Public Works Week in Montgomery, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions with which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, we have two more proclamations. This one is Police Week and Police Officer Memorial Day. Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls is National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the law enforcement agency of the Village of Montgomery play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the Village of Montgomery. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Now therefore, I, Matt Broly, Village President, call upon the citizens of Montgomery and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2016, as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Montgomery to observe Sunday, May 15th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those who, those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duty. I further direct that the flag of the United States be displayed at half-staff on all village government buildings on May 15th in conformance with the Violent Crime Control and Law Enforcement Act of 1994. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Thank you. All right, in front of you, you should have one more proclamation this evening. For economic development, what is it? May 8th through 14th, 2016 is Economic Development Week. Whereas, the International Council, I'm sorry, International Economic Development Council is celebrating its 90th anniversary in 2016. And whereas, the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers. And whereas, the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services, and research, in-depth publications, public policy, advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Program and the Certified Economic Developer Designation. Whereas, economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas, economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And whereas, economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public and private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas, economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions. And whereas, economic developers work in the Village of Montgomery within the state of Illinois. Now therefore, I, Matt Broly, Village President, do hereby proclaim May 8th through 14th, 2016, as Economic Development Week in the Village of Montgomery, and commend the International Economic Development Council and its officers, staff, and members on its 90th anniversary, and recognize 2016 as the Year of the Economic Developer. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anybody else want to take a 10-minute break after that?
No, I had three of them last year, or last week. I thought you said four wheres. I had 150 of them, so you probably had 200 there.
Pretty good at saying that. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting of April 25th, building report, April of 2016, accounts payable for FY16 through May 5th, 2016, accounts payable for FY17 through May 5th, 2016, and the date change for the committee of the whole meeting to May 18th, 2016.
Second.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
I carry 6-0, thank you. Items for separate action. Item A, we have a purchase of two GMC 2500 HD 4x4 pickup trucks. With that, I'll ask Director Hoppinstead for a summary of...
Thank you, Mr. President. As provided in the FY17 Equipment Replacement Fund, I'm requesting the approval of, to purchase two new GMC 2500 heavy-duty pickup trucks. One will replace a current unit, number 203, which is a 2003 model with 110,000 miles on it. The other one is in addition to our fleet to help provide ample medium-duty vehicles to meet the typical demands of public work staff. This is municipal pricing through Kaufman Truck Sales in Montgomery. Each truck is approximately, well, actually, it is $150 higher than that provided under the state contract for a Ford truck. However, these GMCs come with a two-year longer warranty, and we are able to get the nine-foot wide plow as compared to the seven-and-a-half-foot plow. So I'm recommending we purchase through Kaufman's for a combined total of $75,993.60. I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
I have a question for you, Todd.
Yes.
The back page of that, it's the Kaufman invoice, where it's talking about the additionals, the blade, and...
The, the last page of the Kaufman is for the plow addition.
Okay. Just, why is it referencing Ford mount if we're, if we're doing all GMC for public works?
That is a good question. That I don't know. I can certainly look into it. Obviously, we would need the GMC mount, but I think that price is good. They don't deal in Ford trucks, so I imagine it's just an oversight.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad we could buy local.
Yeah, it's, it's worked out in our favor in the past. Most of our medium-duty trucks are GMC through Kaufman's. With the warranty, they're not, not more than about a block and a half from us, so it's real easy. We have a good service rapport with their service staff. Parts availability is pretty quick, so it's worked out well. Plus, our mechanic's most knowledgeable on those trucks, given that that's what we have in our fleet.
All right, any other questions? Nobody wants to question the mailing address for Kaufman Trucks as Aurora?
I've often wondered that myself.
I happened to ask him about that, and when they opened business, they were given a choice, and he chose Aurora for his mailing address, but his business is in Montgomery.
Motion approved. Purchase of the trucks. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
I carry 6-0, thank you. Item B, the purchase of four police vehicles. This is, back to Todd, go ahead.
Thank you again, Mr. Broly. Also provided in the FY17 Equipment Replacement Fund, we have budgeted for the replacement of four police vehicles. The schedule originally called for the replacement of six vehicles. However, Chief and I met back in November to reassess the needs of the PD. We feel it necessary to replace these four vehicles at this time. One of them is an administrative squad from Curry Motors under Contract 152 of the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative. That's priced at $29,417. The other three are through state contract. Those three vehicles include all the necessary upfitting, including lights, sirens, cameras, computers, cages, logos, radar, et cetera, for a combined total of $149,137. So I am asking for the approval of a total of $174,798 for the replacement of these four vehicles and the necessary upfitting. Chief and I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
I have a question. The Contract 152, that's gonna be what we see on the page three, that's gonna be the Ford Explorer Interceptor? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What are the other three going to be? Are there two, three? Three?
There's three others. So there's a total of two Ford Explorers. One is gonna have all the necessary upfitting to be a regular squad. The other one is considered an administrative squad, so it's got less equipment. And then, two of them are Toruses. The Taurus and the Explorer are made on the same platform. They both offer the four-wheel or all-wheel drive. They're just different body sizes.
Okay, thank you.
Are we exclusively Ford products then with the PD?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Are we exclusively Ford products for the PD at this point?
Most of them are, yes. We, we usually purchase them off state bid, and then that is determined by the state. But here, in the last couple of years, that Taurus has been top.
Okay, so we, we have predominantly Ford.
Correct. Well...
No?
A number of them are Chevys as well. We have Chevy Tahos, and we've had some Chevy Malibu and Impalas. The Impalas and the Malibus are being phased out as police package vehicles. The Tahoe is still available, but in 2017, costs, it went up by about $10,000. So they've kind of priced themselves out of the municipal market anyhow. You'll find in many municipalities that the Explorer is now filling that role. So that's what people are turning to. It depends a lot on, on cost and what's available. So to help Chief answer that, no, I think we're split between Ford and Chevy now.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, did I miss what, what these are taking the place of? I presume only a couple are ones new, and it's replacing three of them?
Correct. We are, there are two Impalas that have over 100,000 miles that are 2006s that are going. We also have two 2010 Crown Vics that are going also.
Okay.
The one, the one administrative car will be replaced by the black Tahoe that has approximately 80,000 miles on. That'll go to the detective sergeant.
Thank you. After we're done with, with this, are we, have we totally replaced the Crown Vics? That, they've been phased out?
Correct. That, that's the last of them.
Are these vehicles equipped with the, and pardon my ignorance for the term, the one, the sensors that change the lights?
They, they will be.
These will have those?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the roll?
Trustee Byrne?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz? Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Thank you. Todd, thank you for bringing these forward quickly, so we can get them in use.
Yeah, thank you all. Appreciate it.
How quickly will these become available to the village?
To be quite honest, I've, I've gotten a little fuzzy on my lead times because each vehicle has a different lead time, but I think it was eight to twelve weeks.
Okay.
And maybe close to sixteen with the upfitting. Do you, do you recall? You're right, sixteen weeks. Okay.
Steve's just trying to figure out who he's going to ride with for the parade this year, so...
Yeah, that's, that's totally what I had in my mind.
All right, thank you. Move on to items for discussion. We have a streetlight standard, and I'll turn it over to Engineer Wallers.
Thank you, Mayor Brawley. So this evening, we want to talk a little bit about our streetlight standard. As you know, we've had a concrete residential and commercial streetlight standard for some time. It's served us quite well. But as of late, we've had some trouble getting replacement poles for that style, that concrete style, and it's getting a little more difficult to find contractors that can install the quote-unquote "staff foundation" that is used. So as a result, staff embarked on a little bit of a review to see if there's other light poles that might be more, a little less expensive, a little easier to maintain, and that we could bring forward for discussion. There's really two parts to this. There's one, the pole, and the second is the luminaire. And I think the luminaire is maybe a little bit easier discussion. It turns out that the current standard we have is high-pressure sodium lights, which, again, have served us well. But the same company that makes our lumen heads for the high-pressure sodium makes a compatible LED luminaire, which provides similar light distribution, but a lot less energy expense and runs cooler, will last longer. So we think the switching of the, from the old luminaire to the new luminaire is prudent to do, and we probably should do that no matter what style of pole we choose. So that's one thing that we want you to keep in mind. But we have brought forward a, a pole that is in use in the region. It's a aluminum pole, and it has a little bit different type of base. It's, there's two options. You can get a poured concrete base or a spun-in helix base, which is a little bit easier to install. So really, we're, we're looking for some feedback and also maybe some questions as to what other information you might want for consideration. If we do go forward with changing our standard, the intent would be to use the new pole, obviously, on any new construction. So the reason that kind of brought to the fore was that we, obviously, because of the change in the economy, we haven't had any development of late. But we're in the process of approving plans for the construction of Commerce Drive, and we need to put in streetlights into that area. So we thought, well, this would be probably a, a good time to bring forward the LED light package for sure, and then possibly also consider the aluminum poles. So that's really what kind of moved it forward to bring it to you. One thing to keep in mind also is that, for example, we could move forward with this in what's called an interim standard, the aluminum standard, on Commerce, and you'd be able to see the light poles in place and functioning, so you could get an idea of whether you like it or you don't. There's also other areas around the, the region that you could go to see the pole as well. But keep in mind also, as poles are, fail, because we've had some problems also with corrosion due to salt intrusion in the base, and so the, the concrete poles have a rebar cage that rusts out and then breaks out the bottom, and we have to switch out poles because of that. But we just, we would want to start using the new-style pole to replace those as, as they age and as they are no longer viable. So we might have the possibility of having some, you know, you know, some concrete poles that exist with some aluminum poles in the same street. So that's just something to keep in mind. But we do think, once we move to the new standard, we'd want to stay with it, and then eventually, we would try to get all, you know, aluminum poles in the, in the village. It would take some time, but I think we'd also use the same philosophy for replacement of the luminaires. If we started to see high-pressure sodium go out, we would try to replace it with the LED heads. And if you'll notice, it's the same, I think I mentioned this, but it's the same manufacturer as, as what we've been using. So that's nice for compatibility. So really, this is the start of the discussion. Again, we wanted to get it out there. We think there's reason to make the change, but anytime you do make a change, it obviously is different, so we want to make sure that it's acceptable to the board. So we'd be happy to bring back any additional information you might want. We don't need, obviously, need a decision this evening, but if there is any advice or direction you'd like to give us, we'd appreciate it.
The developer on Commerce will pay for these, right?
Right.
How much do these cost?
They don't have a unit price. I don't know, Todd, if you do buy them...
Approximately?
Approximate cost, I think, is about twenty-two-hundred for the pole. The luminaire's generally about two-hundred-and-fifty, and then the screw-in base is another seven-fifty or eight-hundred dollars. So complete, you're probably looking at nearly thirty-five-hundred per...
Is it a breakaway base in terms of an accident?
The bolts are, are slotted to break. I've had numerous experiences with both concrete and aluminum poles as far as car accidents go. The aluminum comes down in one piece. It's actually very lightweight, so even if it falls on the roof of the car, it's very lightweight. The concrete ones, they tend to shatter...
Leave a mark?
For lack of a better term, and there's kind of shrapnel that's associated everywhere with it.
Okay.
How does the lifespan of the aluminum pole compare to the concrete?
I think it's equally as good, if not better. We have, we have areas in town where the light poles are probably about thirty years old, and we're starting to see failures on those concrete poles. I don't anticipate that the aluminum would be any shorter. It's a, it's a raw aluminum finish. It's not a painted, although there are painted poles available, so it's, it's basically maintenance-free. The LED light can suffer from a driver failure. There's a component called the driver that feeds the LED, but that's a pretty easy swap-out compared to the bulbs that will blow on the high-pressure sodium, and they're actually very hard to get rid of because they contain mercury. The, they will also cycle, so when you see the, the streetlight will be on, and then it goes out, and it's out for about five minutes, it cools down, and then comes back on. That's called cycling. So those problems all go away with the use of LED. There are far less maintenance necessary in, in power.
Thank you for that tidbit about why they go off. I've never asked the question, but I've noticed it, that just randomly it'll go off in front of my house, and half an hour later, it's back on again.
They, they can be repaired, but, yeah.
It's a safety mechanism, I'm guessing.
Yeah, it gets so hot that it shuts itself off, and then once it cools, it's able to go back on. It, that cycle will tend to grow over time until it's a total failure, and then we can repair it.
I like the idea of switching to the LED. Would we then require that? Anytime a new development comes in that's putting in a public streetlight, they would have to put in the LED?
This would be then be the standard of the village, so when anybody develops a roadway, they would use that as a standard?
Okay.
Including the pole and the...
Who would pay for the streetlights? Say we put one on Horseman and Caterpillar Drive and Horseman and Baseline, because those two areas are so dark at night when you come, you know, down Caterpillar Drive, and all of a sudden, there's a road to the left, and there's no light at all. I thought Speedway would light it up more, but they don't light it up at all.
So those roadways are the village's, so any additional lighting would be the responsibility of the village. So those can be added if, if needs be, but that would be our responsibility.
Okay, there we go.
And about a month ago, I text Todd about the Orchard and Caterpillar intersection, how it was relatively dark. We don't own or control any of those in there, but they had one or more lights that were out at that time that they were looking to replace.
That is correct, and I believe that's been done now. They were also looking to retrofit that intersection and improve the lighting, because I think they're adding a crosswalk there.
Yeah.
I think it's also important to note, in relation to your comment, that while it would be the village's responsibility to add lighting in those areas, those costs that I mentioned a few moments ago are strictly for the pole and the light. The infrastructure, if it's not existing, is where we're really going to face some heavy costs, so it's not safe to assume that that's a per-light cost.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any other comments? I don't think anybody will notice the, the change in the light pole itself, any, as far as residents go.
I think when you switch in the middle of a block, if something fails and you replace, then the LED light versus the other light, there's probably going to be a difference. But you're not going to, it's kind of like the sidewalk. You're not going to replace the whole block of sidewalk to make them look good.
All right.
Motion to approve. Oh, we can't vote this time.
That's right.
Well, I like the idea anyway.
We can build a consensus on one area that we would like to move forward, it's not too soon, would be to direct the folks that, that are doing the Commerce Drive to use the pole and the luminaire, so we could get that moving, if that's acceptable to the board.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
And then we can, you know, bring this back for action at the next meeting. And it would be added to the subdivision of the poles.
Okay. My only, I guess my only concern, it's not really a concern, more of a curiosity, is the cost difference between the two? You know, if they're, I don't know how many they're adding along Commerce, five light poles maybe, but if you're doing a large subdivision...
The cost for equipment is pretty much negligible.
Okay.
It's, it's very similar. The cost savings is going to be in maintenance and energy consumption. I think on energy consumption, it's about twenty-five percent...
Yeah.
Or less of what you're seeing. It may be as low as fifteen percent.
Okay. All right. Sounds good, thank you. All right, is there any new or unfinished business?
I, I have new business. It's a question for Todd. I've been thinking about our trees, and I'm just wondering, I, I don't expect you to have an answer, but perhaps you can look into this? I'm wondering if we're in a position to do like a mini nursery, a mini tree nursery on some of the land that we own, and that would save us over time, and we could also pick the kinds that we want, and we would know the, their whole life cycle. So if you could check that out and let us know if that would be something feasible for us. Thank you.
I can look into it further, yeah.
Somewhere Ed's ears are ringing right now.
Yes.
Yes. Anything else?
I just wanted to point out, I did place in front of everybody, this is a flyer that Debbie put together for the West Side event for the Sunday in the Park on June twenty-sixth, just to put, put some extra eyes on it, just to see. I'm going to be making copies of these to give to each of the trustees to be able to pass out, as well as, I'll give some PDFs to you as well of it. So Debbie Buchanan and staff did a great job putting this together for us.
Awesome. I'll just update the board. Doug and I went down to Springfield with Metro West last week, and really, we very typically have a good, a good turnout, we, every year, actually, but this year, we met with all four leaders. We met with Leader Curry and Representative Chaplavia, and the Speaker walked by. So I've learned that when you're having a meeting and you want to get the next biggest guy, just leave the door open. When he walked by, they yanked him in. So we got to meet with the Speaker when we were down there. Leader Durkin, Redonia...
Colleton?
Colleton, I think that's all of them. And several other mayors and, and whatnot. Metro West is down there. The next day, we went to, Pete actually led meetings with the IEPA and the IDNR. I haven't heard how those went, but I presume they went well. I, at the same time, we had a conflicting press conference that Metro West was a part of. Metro West and four other COGS did a press conference down there, basically reiterating the Metro West strategies for this year, and essentially, the state of Illinois, don't hurt us. At least that was my part of the speech, was to talk about LGDF and that we need every penny of that. So just thought I'd give you guys the update. I'm sure that you guys saw or heard, so... That's it. It was a shorter summary than, than the one Teresa gave a couple of years ago. You remember that?
Yes, I do remember that.
It was awesome. All right, anything else?
I did want to just mention that Pete and I did go through Kankakee on our way back. I appreciate the lift home, and so we went and looked at the mural that they had on the street so we could see it. So Pete will be providing us with some additional information about that location that we originally had planned.
All right. Now you see future meetings. We have, the next committee of the whole meeting has a new date, Wednes, next Wednesday, May eighteenth at seven PM. If you cannot make that meeting, please let Jeff know in advance. Hopefully, everybody can attend, as that would be awesome. All right, executive session. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, discuss litigation which is filed and pending pursuant to five ILCS one-twenty over two C eleven.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Byrne?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Thank you.